Calling the meeting to order, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Flynn?
Present.
Councilmember Huffey?
Present.
Councilmember Walter?
Present.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Present.
Mayor Hasko?
Here.
You have a forum, thank you.
Great. To address AB 2449, there are no people participating remotely, so we do not need to take any actions on that, correct? Okay. There are no presentations or proclamations today, so we're going to move through that item. And we now will start with our town manager report. Mark?
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a number of things tonight. First of all, we continue to move forward on the town manager recruitment process for your regular town manager. Got a lot of busy days coming up in the next two weeks. You probably see the signs out on the roads, PV Palooza is this weekend. This is not a town program, but it is something that involves our town, so please follow the guidance and guidelines that are out there on the signs and so on, so that people have a good time that day. The mayor and I had a, I think, a productive meeting with Congressman Mercado today, and we're off to a start, I believe. Why he gave us his personal cell number, I don't know, but...
But we now have it.
And it was reconnecting for me, because the congressman and I worked together in San Jose. We also had, I felt, a useful meeting with the fire district over budget issues, see how it all goes, but I think we can work with them on that. Tonight's agenda is a little lighter, and the reason is the long day tomorrow for Councilmember Flynn and the Mayor Hasko. Town manager work, so I want to thank the council for working with me on shaping the agenda, so it wouldn't be terribly long. And I promised Councilmember Huffey, she made it back from the Mid Peninsula Open Space District Board, that I would have a positive surprise for her, so here it is. We received a letter today from the HCD that we are in substantial compliance, and therefore we have a certified housing element. It was nice receiving that. I wanted to thank the council, because it was because of the ordinances that you passed that made it. I think it helped to have the conversation that we had set up as well, I think that was useful. But it starts with the leadership, which is you guys, what you pass. And, you know, Terrence had a strategy there, too, that we would pass these and see if they would work. We got advice from Senator Becker's office, particularly Alex Kobayashi. And we had a good meeting and so on, but it was still, you just don't know until it's there. So that's my surprise for you tonight.
Thank you very much. That was certainly a wonderful surprise.
The letter itself says two things that I found productive. One is you're in substantial compliance, and they're never going to tell you you're in full compliance. It just won't happen. There's always something you can do better, which most of us believe anyway. The second thing is we look forward to collaborating with you.
Yay!
So those are big deal things, and I wanted to acknowledge the council for your work on that. And came in just as we were getting ready for Congressman Mercado. I said he could take credit, but only in Washington, DC. Thank you, council. All right, that's what I have.
Well, I want to take a moment to thank Mark and the entire staff for their special efforts here. This was tricky. It was a long process. It was a tough process, and thank you for your fortitude and constructive thoughts along the way. So please really recognize the special effort.
And can I just add one thing?
Yes.
Tony's been here a year.
Today?
Not today, at the last finance committee meeting. Somehow he came in, his first day was a finance committee meeting, and his one-year anniversary was a finance committee meeting, so, yeah.
Damn it.
That's great.
Could I ask a question as well?
A question?
Yeah, for Mark, based on his town manager report.
You can ask him for clarification, we can't engage in discussion, but...
Sure, it's not a discussion. I just wondered when you were going to let the town know, or what the process was for letting the town know about our housing element.
Tonight was step one, because we just got the letter, seriously, this afternoon, just before Congressman Mercado came. So we'll have to figure out the best ways to communicate, which we will.
And the letter will be posted, presumably, as part of our normal public record.
It will be posted, probably, on the HCD site, too, maybe, I don't know, but it will be posted on our site, for sure. But we'll figure out a way to communicate that. I wanted to make you all the first.
Thank you.
So we'll just take it from there.
Thank you.
I mean, I admit, I called the mayor first.
Yeah, you would never have known.
That's the way, but no, it's a good point.
Is it process, or what?
I suggest fireworks.
If it's brief, because we're really not allowed to...
I know, I know, because it's not agendized. Thank you to the staff. I've been a little bit frustrated. I know some of you have seen my email, so thank you. Please tell Terrence I'm grateful. But we still need to meet our housing, building, right?
This is the beginning.
Right.
This is not the end. And we still have projects that I believe are viable, and we talked with them about that before. The Village Square, the Christ Church are the two that are most viable to me, and I think they could produce upwards, on the high end, upwards to 55 to 60 units of housing potentially, depends on what we can get with each of those. We'll see. We've talked with them about Fogarty being a working worker sites. I think that's a long shot. So the two I'm really focused on are the Village Square and Christ Church.
But we'll be talking about it on a continual basis.
Right, I know, it's not agendized.
This is a beginning, and we'll be back with you on a lot of that stuff, so don't worry. This is, we're not just going around saying, you know, accolades. No, no, this is a start.
We still have to build 50 very low units, et cetera, right?
Yeah, and there's a lot of credibility on the line here. Council's credibility, my credibility, Dan's credibility.
But I must insist on taking a moment and recognizing the effort to get to this point.
Thank you.
Which has been very hard to get to, and a continual effort should be expected as we move forward with the program and things like that. All right, we're going to move to oral communications, which are comments from the public on items not agendized. So there's no one in the schoolhouse that had their hand raised, and the first person online is Rita Comas.
Hi, congratulations to everyone in the town getting that done. That was a huge relief. Last week, there was a grass fire on the corner of West Ridge and Cervantes, and really appreciate the quick action of the Woodside Fire District. I hope the community can continue to work together to get rid of a lot of the grass and weeds. And, you know, I just didn't see much of a response from the town, or perhaps that response should have come from Woodside Fire District to let the residents know, because that could have been really serious. It's serious as it was, but it could have been worse. And I also want to mention that, you know, I've attended most, if not all, of the recent Portola Valley Finance Meetings that have been held for the public. And at the last finance committee meeting, it was noted that the 2022 audit was going to be delayed more, and the 2023, and the 2024, and the plan for the 2025 audits, it's all been extended. But here we are, we have all of these projects coming up that we're planning and things that we need. And, you know, I know we're trying really hard to keep the finances as a priority, but I just don't see how we could plan on, continue to plan on, doing extra things to get money, or when our financial stability is just not there yet, and it's been promised for a long time, and I know people are working on it, but we can accomplish anything and everything, so please, we've got to figure out a way to move this forward faster. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Rita. Karen Askey is next.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to share my excitement in Mark's announcement about our housing element, and I want to thank all of you for your focus and your attention to this. I know it was the top priority for our town, and I do know finances obviously are still there and in the background, but congratulations to everyone, to Terrence, to Mark. This is just thrilling news, super news, a long time coming, and we got the monkey off our back. Thanks.
Thank you, Karen. All right, I do not see any other hands raised online. So at this point, we are going to address the consent agenda, but there's been a correction made by staff that I'm going to have the town clerk describe, so that when you're considering whether to pull something or to comment on it, you know what she's already taken the effort to correct.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through the chair. Page one of the May 14 minutes, I would just like to strike the fifth bullet under the town manager report. I think that came from a previous set of minutes, so if you can just make that correction, that would be great. Thank you.
And so when you're looking at the consent agenda, consider that correction already made. And if you have any additional things you want to question or discuss, let me know. So going to take public comment on the consent agenda. I am not seeing any hands raised in the schoolhouse. I am not seeing any hands raised online. So back to the town council, does anyone have any items from the consent agenda they want to pull for discussion? I'm not seeing anyone here, so if that's the case, I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, next we move on to the regular agenda, and Tony, our finance director, is going to present a review of the 2025-26 Capital Improvement Plan Budget Development. This is not seeking approval, it's seeking, if anything, direction, and the finance director will tell us in particular items that he might want us to comment on as he goes through it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So tonight is an overview of the fiscal year 2025-26 Capital Improvement Plan, as it is currently in development. So tonight, I'll be reviewing some of the, actually, all the proposed projects, broken down into the following categories: roads and right-of-way, parks and fields, open space, building and facilities. And then after I review all the proposed projects, there'll be an opportunity for council to list any additional projects that want to be considered for the CIP. And then following that, there'll be a time for questions, discussion, and then direction from council. So starting with roads and right-of-way maintenance. First project is our annual street resurfacing. We're proposing a project of about $900,000. The project would resurface portions of Manoka Road, from Cervantes Road to Gold Drive, Ossom Lane from Town Limits to West Ridge Drive, and West Ridge from Solana Road to the Apache Drive. Project will include about 20,500 square feet of digouts and 217,000 square feet of overlay. Project will increase the town pavement condition index by focusing on segments with a PCI of less than 70. We're looking at $900,000 for 2526, of which $75,000 of design, construction is about $825,000. And the project will be funded through our capital projects fund of $157,000, gas tax of $115,000, Measure A of $421,000, Measure M of $57,000, Measure W of $150,000. This amount is proposed. If the, when the project goes out to bid, if the costs do come in above what's being proposed, we do have additional funding dollars in our transportation funds, such as gas tax, Measure A, and Measure W. Second project is a storm drain assessment. And this project would assess the town's storm drainage system, including an inventory of all major publicly-owned and other certain significant private drainage facilities to determine capacity for the vein runoff. This project will identify the maintenance and repair needs of the town's storm drain system. This is more, this is desperately needed for long-term planning. I believe that the storm drain assessment will identify what maintenance needs are that need to be repaired and could possibly run in $2 to $3 million worth of repairs.
Did you say $3 million?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
$3 million?
Again, that's just an estimate. Storm drain repairs, this is an annual project. We usually set aside about $20,000 each year to make any emergency repairs to this town's storm drain system, and this is separate then from the storm drain assessment. Project right now is the Shawnee Pass speed bumps. This came up at a previous council meeting. We have no cost estimates for this project, however, we would like to have this project assigned to the Bicycle Pedestrian and Traffic Safety Committee for further development. Possible funding sources include Safe Routes to School grants, or our other transportation funds, such as gas tax, Measure A, Measure N, Measure W. Those funds, traffic calming measures are eligible uses for those transportation funds. But for this project, we're asking it to be assigned to the Bicycle Pedestrian and Traffic Safety Committee. Moving on to parks and fields maintenance. Portfield bathroom. This project has been in the pipeline for, since pre-COVID. In 2021, we did receive two grants from California Parks Department totaling almost $181,000. At the time, the total cost was estimated to be $389,400. That was in 2021. The design phase will determine the feasibility of the project and will also update cost estimates from 2021. We're not looking for this project to start in 2526, but probably starting in 2627, as the timeline to spend the grants is prior to the close of fiscal year 2028. But currently having estimates for 2627 of $64,900, and $2728 of $324,500. Those numbers were pulled from the application from 2021, but we're asking that this project be assigned to the Parks and Rec Committee for further development. As stated earlier, the grant needs to be spent by fiscal year 2728, and this possibly could be a possible use for the PV fund, or some additional fundraising for matching contributions, construction costs, and ongoing maintenance, as the cost will probably exceed the amount of the grants. Town ports resurfacing, this project was submitted by the Parks and Rec Committee. This project could be funded by either donations or Park and New Funds. We have a Park and New Fund that currently has a balance of $45,000 approximately. But this project will resurface and repaint the town's three courts located at town center. Ports are used for basketball, tennis, and pickleball, and have multiple cracks, making one court unusable for tennis, but usable for pickleball. Cost estimates are $10,000 per port, and funding to be provided by donations, or as I say, through the Park and New Fund. And this is an item that we will ask for council direction on tonight, whether to use the Park and New Funds or submit this project for fundraising. Moving on to open space improvements, we have the Valley Oak Trail Bridge. This bridge was damaged by a storm event in February 2024. We have been working with our insurance provider, and the cost to replace one bridge and repair an existing bridge is estimated to be a little bit under $71,000, and the insurance company will be providing the funds for insurance claim reimbursement. The bridge repair and replacement will restore the Valley Oak Trail for recreational purposes and increase safety. I guess we're looking to have this project approved for 2526. The next project is trail rehabilitation. Usually set aside $20,000 each year for emergency trail repairs. This year, it's $20,463, because we're including the remaining funds from the shady trail project. Actually, that should be $24,000, sorry. That's a typo on my part. But the Trails and Path Committee have also submitted a list of trails that have significant needs for rehabilitation and repair, and those trails are Sequoia Trail, Sausal Trail, Portola Road Trail, Palmer Trail, Alpine Road Trail, and Eagle Trail. We're asking that this be assigned to the Trails and Path Committee to further scope out this project, prioritizing which ones need to be addressed first, and also kind of determining what costs it's going to need to rehab and rehabilitate these six trails. And again, this also could be a project that could receive some donations, or a Safe Route to School grant, or possibly some of our other transportation fund, especially if any of these projects are close to our right-of-way. Buildings and facilities. Town Hall Energy Efficiency Upgrades, this is a PCE grant, a little bit over $64,000. This project will fund energy efficiency upgrades at Town Hall. Efficiency upgrades can include, but are not limited to, boiler replacement, HVAC, lighting. Stated project is funded by a grant from Public Energy. Upgrading to more energy-efficient items can reduce utility and maintenance costs. Town Hall Sheriff Substation. This project will fund the conversion of the front portion of the main conference room located at Town Hall into a sheriff's substation. Cost is estimated at $50,000, and will be funded by the COPS Grant Fund. This project will increase the presence of sheriff's deputies at Town Hall, increasing safety. Town Hall IT upgrades. This project will fund IT upgrade at Town Hall. Scope of project will include replacing aging equipment to maintain connectivity and data integrity. Cost is estimated at $50,000, and will be funded by the Capital Projects Fund, and this project will increase that. Schoolhouse IT upgrades. This is a, this project will fund the complete replacement of all IT equipment in the schoolhouse. Cost is estimated $100,000, and will be funded through donations. Project will increase staff, council, and committee efficiency and communication, and this will be a project that we will be submitting or soliciting donations for. EV charging stations, this is another project that has come up at previous council meetings and discussions with staff, or with council members as well. There is an MTC grant. We're not exactly sure of the dollar amount yet. I just, we just don't have that information, so we're looking for this project to be assigned to staff to further develop this project, and then eventually be assigned to the Bicycle Pedestrian and Traffic Safety Commission to determine the location of where these charging stations will be installed in town. So in review, we have 11 projects that we're asking to be authorized for 2526, totaling $1.36 million. $297,000 will be coming out of our Capital Projects Fund, and just as a reminder, this project is funded through general fund transfers. The balance in the account is a little bit over $700,000. Moving forward, with our budget situation, if we have a deficit budget or a balanced budget, we will not be able to fund any more transfers into the Capital Projects Fund, and this could hurt our matching requirements for future grants. We have about $265,000 in grants, including the donations that will be received from the PV fund, because as we adopted the donation policy, we said that those funds will be received as a grant from PV Fund. There's also $50,000 from the COPS Grant Fund for the substation, and then transportation funds, gas tax of $115,000, Measure A of $421,000, Measure M of $57,000, and Measure W of $150,000. So again, as you say, there's 11 projects. We'll be asking direction on, or specific direction on Shawnee Pass speed bumps, the town and ports resurfacing, and the EV charging stations, but the other projects, we feel we have enough cost estimates to, and also we feel this will not be a significant drain on staff resources with 11 projects. Most of them will be project managed by our town engineer. That concludes my overview of the CIP program, so now I'll turn it back to council for questions, discussion, and direction.
Thank you. I would normally ask this question, but it might be helpful for others to hear it again. The three items you wanted particular direction on Shawnee Pass?
The Shawnee Pass speed bumps, the court resurfacing.
Court.
And then the EV charging stations.
Thanks, okay. All right, so we're going to go to questions from the council, then we'll go to public comment on the items. So Helen, I sense you have questions?
Can I, I know we're supposed to be asking questions, but can I speak to the EV charger grant for a moment, just to clarify, so that we all are familiar with it? Because I'm working on the same grant in Happling Bay, and I think it's important to the discussion for the understanding of our budget.
Okay.
Okay. I don't, I, the amount of money that Portola Valley got was around $320,000, $25,000 from MTC. All of the matching grant amount, and this is what I needed council to hear, is $5,000 per port, not per charger, or per port. And so all matching is taken care of by PCE. The town would not have any matching requirements. And if there, if, for instance, with the tariff situation, if the costs were to go up, MTC, there is a process to scale back the scope to stay within budget. So I wanted people to understand the cost of it. The costs are staff time, but not monetarily.
And Tony, do you agree with that, or do you have any other context?
I have not seen any documentation on this, so I, that's why I'm saying assign it to staff, so we can further develop the process.
Okay, thank you. And Cory?
Sorry, through the mayor. Thank you, Helen, for the background. That's a project that we are working on, as well as Helen is one of our thought partners on that, and that's correct. But it would only be a staff time cost.
Okay, that's helpful clarification. Right, do you have questions, then? Okay, all right, we're going to start with Rebecca, then, on questions.
Thank you, Tony. Let's see, what is the question here? Can you explain a little bit more the Park and New Fund?
Yes, it's funded through park developer fees.
Park what?
It's the development fee. I'm not aware in recent history that it's been assessed, that this fund has been in our charted accounts, collecting interest, and it's been, it's available for use for any park and recreation project.
That's the language.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So you talked about the sheriff's station in the conference... So you talked about the Sheriff's Station in the conference room, but part of the conference room. So will there still be a conference room there for staff to use?
Yeah, that conference room is actually our EOC. So we're moving the Sheriff's up to there, but there, there's going to be a wall, a partition. But they're still going to be able to access the EOC. And it's also, we already have county communications in there already. So it's just going to be running lines for IT connection and electrical outlets. But it'll be probably the, the front order of the, of the conference. So, but they'll, they'll be able to access from the outside to the glass doors. But, and there will also be, there will be a sheriff's vehicle in the parking lot. Instead of being hidden way in the back.
And the public would be able to just access them as well?
Yes.
Okay. And will that be dependent on the hours that the town staff would be open? Or is those things going to be decided?
It's an outdoor, it's a separate door than the front door.
Right.
So when the sheriff's deputies are there, it should be unlocked.
Okay. And then can you explain a little bit more about the capital fund? Because you said there's something like seven hundred thousand in there?
Yes, there's.
But like this year, we put pretty much most capital projects on hold. Even though we had some money in the fund?
It did, but the capital outlay, the capital program last year was projecting a one point one million dollar transfer from the general fund into that fund for some of the capital projects we, we deferred any, any of those projects moving forward, but we did not do a transfer.
Okay. And can you explain the matching issue? Do we have to always have seven hundred thousand in there in order to get grants?
It's, it's part of this fund has been used for matching contributions for grants and other, mostly for the transportation projects. So this year, the budget is proposing about two hundred and ninety-three thousand amount of funds, so that's going to reduce it. And if I can't put any other additional funds into this fund from the general fund, then if we have a significant matching contribution for a future grants, then we might have to come up with another source.
But we could do that mid-year if for some reason there is some huge grant that comes along, potential comes along.
Well, if, if we have availability in the general fund reserves to make that transfer outside of the budget, then yes. But that again, that'll be a council decision.
Okay. And in terms of road repair, you listed the one road. Is there, is there any way to get potholes kind of repaired temporarily? Or can that be part of some project? Or is that more not capital improvement type thing?
We have a pavement management program.
A what?
A pavement management program that the Transportation Authority provides every year or every two years. So a lot of the resurfacing comes from our, from that program and what's in our Streetsaver, what's in the Streetsaver Program. So we're identifying areas where the PCI is the lowest and we're going to apply most of the funds to there. But if there is areas that need to be addressed, the town engineer can do that assessment. And again, as I stated, we do have additional transportation funds that could be used for this process or this purpose. But we can make that determination after the adoption of this budget.
Because I know in the past we've tried to repay the whole road as opposed to just doing spot hole repair.
Right. We want to get the most bang for the buck.
Right. But, yeah, but given that we don't have enough money, it seems.
Well, no, the, most of these, this project, most of it is coming from our transportation fund. So, and that money comes in on a regular basis.
Okay. At what point would we suggest other projects? Would it be during discussion? Or how, how does that work?
Discussion. We're only asking questions on what he has presented.
Okay. How do you go about establishing the cost estimates for various projects?
Well, for most of the streets, we have existing, I guess I stated the pavement management program, Streetsaver Program. The town engineer, which we recently hired, thank you, has also provided cost estimates for some of the street projects and the substation. He also has contracting experience as well. So he was able to come up with a, a quick estimate for that project. But some of the other projects are, for example, the Ford Field Bathroom. Again, that was from the application from twenty twenty-one. And then whatever others, it's, if we have a funding source identified, like for the bridges, we got that estimate from the insurance company. So it's, it's, there is some science to it, but then there's also, I mean, I've been doing this for twenty-one years. I kind of have a.
And I see that you were recommending that we put some of the projects into some of the committees to develop them. I'm just curious how they will, if they're going to be responsible for kind of getting some pricing. I'm thinking the trails, for example.
Well, yeah, well, I would, I'm anticipating that the Trail, Trails and Path Committee would work with the town engineer.
Okay.
She kind of like what we did with the Shady Trail project.
And?
The committee was working with our interim town engineer at the time.
I see. And remind me about the donation for the Shady Trail. They, they, the donors gave us permission to then use the left. Okay, fabulous. And then we talked a little bit by email about the technology update. Does that, that doesn't, it sounds like it doesn't also include sort of software implementation or expansion of what we have in terms of software?
Well, we're, we're already in the process of, you know, fully implementing intergov and open gov and CPAS and trying to make those work. So that's basically our normal operating processes. So I don't think we need to set aside additional funds for that purpose. This project is to update our aging equipment so that we don't lose connection to the internet or actually connecting to the applications that we're using.
I know you said that it's part of your normal job, but I feel, feel like the staff, we're a little understaffed and staff doesn't necessarily have enough time to do that. So I'm wondering if we don't need to plan for a little bit more staff time to devote to that project in a sense, because it's sort of a big chunk of time.
Right, but it's still going to fall under the operating portion of the budget.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's it for me. Thanks. Thank you.
Mary, questions?
Oh, yeah. I had a couple of, of questions. The nine hundred thousand for the capital, that's coming from the transportation fund, is that right? That's what you just said?
All but.
Okay. And the three million dollars for the storm drain assessment, where does that come from?
That is my estimate of what's going to be the outcome of the storm drain assessment.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't understand that.
We're going to, we're going to spend fifty thousand to get the storm drain assessments.
We're going to have a high.
From there, from that assessment, then they're going to identify what projects need to be. And then, and basically all I'm doing is we had a storm drain assessment done from nineteen seventy? And then I just, I just, I just put in a CPI inflator from what they identified, and it came out to about three million dollars.
Wow. Okay. And where do we get that money when we, they ask it, ask for us?
Well, there's, there's grants, there's the whole, we can do grants.
Grants. Okay, well, that's amazing. And the Valley Oak, how much did you say the insurance company said it would cost?
It was seventy, seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand. That, that sounds okay. That was, I slipped a zero in there. Okay, well, I'm, I'm set. I think, thank you very much. It's really exciting to see this.
Thank you, Mary. Craig, questions?
Yep, thanks, Tony. So on the resurfacing, the one hundred and fifty-six K that's coming out of our capital budget, is that like because we have to do matching? Is that?
Well, there's maintenance of effort. It requires general fund contribution.
Okay. So, so that's kind of sort of just a requirement to play the, play the game. Okay, great. So then I think the storm drain stuff, I mean, and you're just, I mean, you just came up the rough number and, and basically, if we're going to look to the future, we're going to have to think about how we would fund that over time. You said there's grants. Can you also use some of these transportation gas tax? For, because I mean, obviously, at least the ones that run under a road, if they fail, the road's going to fail. So is that an option?
Yes, we can use the transportation funds for covert repair, but for the actual assessment, no.
Right, yeah. So, so I get that you assess it, but one, but the three million, right, we could, some of that could be transportation funds.
Transportation funds, grants.
Okay, great. And then on the Valley Oak Trail, so it's, the insurance company is saying seventy K. Is there a deductible that goes with that?
No, this is, this is, they're cutting us a check to cover the cost of replacing and repairing.
Okay, so this is just covered by our insurance premium effectively. Great. So then you were saying you, you want us to sort of remand this to the Trails Committee, for instance, on the trail stuff. Are they going to come up with some kind of, and I'm putting this in air quotes, but you know, a PCI equivalent for the trails as a way of thinking about this, rather than just like, let's just spend twenty thousand dollars on trails? Which I feel like in the past, we've just had a budget and we've just spent it. Versus looking a little bit more carefully and saying, you know, these trails really need it, and maybe these others don't right now. Given we're in a tight financial situation, I'm wondering how you imagine that sort of conversation with the Trails Committee?
I mean, if we could do a Trails assessment as well to kind of identify where, but I mean, the committee has pretty much laid out a list of all the trails that need to be addressed, what the issues are. And, you know, there's soggy water, or there's, you know, there's equestrian can't use this, or there's, I mean, also if there's, if these, any, if any of these trails are, come up against right-of-way or around a school, I mean, there's other funding opportunities there. But yeah, it's, again, it's, it's part of, and I mean, it, my, this is my observation, it really has not been much long-term planning done by the town for a lot of areas. And this is just, we need to get going onto that road of, of identifying what our future maintenance and improvement needs are going to be over the next five to ten years.
Okay, yeah. And I, I guess I'm just hoping we find sort of an objective way of viewing that. So, okay. So then on the substation, moving it up front. So a couple of questions is, how much is that going to impact the operation of our EOC? I mean, losing a quarter of it, is that?
Shouldn't, because if, if the EOC is open, the sheriff's deputies are going to be there anyway.
But is that wall removable?
No. No, there's, there's going to be a part, but there will be a door that they can go from one side to the other.
Okay. All right. And then?
I don't, and I, I don't think the, the wall is going to go all the way up to the ceiling because the, the ceiling in the community room is angled and.
Right. And so then if somebody's trying to have a confidential conversation in the conference room with some member of the public and the deputies are there, that, I mean, I, I know this seems, this seems awkward to me that we're taking some of our, you know, conference room space. So I was just trying to understand how we're envisioning this all working out.
Right. I mean, there's still, there still will be ways to close the conference if the deputies need it for.
Well, I think it goes both ways, right? And we're, and we're going to ask the deputies to move, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and then I guess my other, I mean, are they making a commitment to this? Like if it's there, they're going to be there?
When we proposed this to the sheriff November? Yeah, November.
It was the last contract.
Yeah, and they were very favorable. The reaction was, yeah, this would be great.
Okay, I'm, but I'm looking for something a little bit different. Like if we do this, if we put the money into it, are they committing to be there a certain number of hours a day, rather than just like, oh, this is great. We like it better than the other place, but we're still only there, you know, for a couple of hours every other day or something.
We can have conversations with the deputies.
Okay. And then the last question is, is this, are we required to do this? Or this is just something that we discussed and we all think it's a nice to have?
Are we required to do the substation?
Yeah, like we're not contractually required.
There's no contractual requirement.
Okay. I think that's it. I guess the, the last question, I guess, is on the IT stuff. Will we, I guess I, I've been hoping that, you know, we'll look at, you know, who's supplying our IT services. And I would hope that some of this sort of upgrade is part of some kind of RFP for that. Are you envisioning, I mean, I realize this is capital and that's ongoing, you know, annual expense, but I hope that these two get sort of connected, like that we're not just upgrading routers and stuff without making sure that we think about, you know, who's providing our IT support.
Those are separate. These are immediate needs that need to be addressed now.
But, so like, are we talking routers or servers? Can, I mean, can you give us a sense for what, what it is that we're, we're paying for here?
If I may, through the mayor, we have a current IT master plan with our current provider that discusses, it's a little bit more than just routers, it's general infrastructure items in terms of servers that we have, moving some of them to a cloud, for cloud-based service, as well as some of the, one of the equipment pieces we had fall today, which is sort of a small Wi-Fi point-to-point system, creating something a bit more permanent versus something we're taping to a wall, for example. And that would be sort of phased with this IT master plan. This is something that if we decided to move forward with an RFP, let's say we ended up changing the provider that we have. This is something we can review with that person and see if they see this as a plan to move forward or if there's anything they believe we need to adjust. But it is more of a phased approach.
Okay, got it. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Helen, questions?
Hi, thank you. So what, what the heck is a dig out in the road resurfacing? You said a dig out. You said?
Dig out. It's.
I don't know what that is.
It's, I'm not an engineer, but it's, it's wherever there's holes, we dig them out, make them surface, and there's also overlay.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I wanted to make sure we were talking about for speed bumps on Shawnee Pass because in the staff report, it says Sausal Drive?
Yeah, it was my mistake.
Okay, just clarifying. Thank you. And then this is just questions right now. I will save that one for comments. Proposition sixty-eight money for bathroom, I noticed. You did not say that you would ask for donations to help make up any difference potentially for the Dorothy Ford Field Bathroom.
That could be a possibility, but I think we need to go through the design phase first.
Right.
We have to determine what the cost is and also if the project is feasible.
But I think, you go, I, the, maybe I'm, so the, is the cost for the design and planning phase covered it by the Prop sixty-eight or there was a shortfall, right?
Yeah, but twenty percent of that is match. But yeah, the, the, what was in the sheet for that project is based on what was submitted in the application in twenty twenty-one. So the design phase, that's what was identified in the application.
And so that shortfall, we could ask for donations to make up that shortfall though, too, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Staff report also about bocce ball?
Again, that was.
Bocce ball's fun.
Yeah, we're, they're currently working on that. I was a little premature.
Okay.
Parks and Rec Committee is, actually, they, they met with the town engineer today to kind of talk about locations. But yeah, there's, there's, it was a bit premature on my part.
Okay. Love our Parks and Rec. You guys are busy over there. So, okay, that's, but we're not trying to fund that right now, right?
I'm sorry.
We're not, it's not, it's not in your slides. We're not, you're not asking for funding for that yet, right?
Yeah, no, it's premature.
Okay, just double checking.
Do you guys mind if I just go check this?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Me too.
Okay. Town Hall Energy Efficiency Upgrade, of course, Craig, one quick comment, Craig. So the money for that is from PCE. PCE is probably, unless our council members vote for it, that's why Craig, it won't be renewed again. So that's why it would be good to use the money while we have it, member agency grant. Okay. Let me double check my other. And when, other sites, you said that, that if we wanted to bring up other possibilities for funding, right?
Yes, if, if you want to ask for additional projects or list, put them on the list. But I would ask that council prioritize that. Whether to move forward with it or to consider it or to push it off to next year.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Would you, mayor, how would you like me to make the proposals for the other?
Wait, we all want to understand what he's got, and then I think there. Uh, wait, I, we all want to understand what he's got, and then I think there, we're gonna inevitably get to a little bit of a exchange as you make your comments on additional items that might be, well, is it a question of, did he consider something and over override it, in this case?
Right, okay, I'll do it that way, thank you. Um, for the speed bumps, obviously that came up in earlier conversations here at council, we had some, a resident who was asking for them. But however, data, we've got accident-prone spots, have any of, you know, were any of those other accident-prone spots, like, I hear sirens every weekend from, you know, people getting hit on bicycles, were any of those other sites considered for CIP projects?
Uh, no, I've not, that's not been brought to my attention, and again, the town engineer's new. Uh, but again, this could be a process that you designate the staff to say for next year.
Right.
Consider these spots.
Great, okay, um, let me make sure I have all of my questions, um, about the sheriff's substation, um, so, I'm just going to use Halfing Bay Substation as a reference, in that, um, they don't really, they're not very welcoming, like, uh, uh, like, I will just be honest, right, um, so that's why I'm, have, have you had conversations with the sheriff yet about staff and at, public access to the staff while they're in that space?
Yeah.
You have? And they would, and they're fine with work, yeah.
Through the mayor, we have had conversations with the sheriff about some of the community feedback we've received.
Thanks.
Dark window, the door's locked, it's inaccessible, and part of this was to create an accessible environment, as well as a more welcoming environment. So I do agree with Vice Mayor Taylor that we need to discuss maybe parameters around what those office hours, for lack of a better term, look like. But we have had conversations about the difficulty and almost negative atmosphere that they're currently.
Right, absolutely, so thank you, okay, and let me just make sure. Okay, that's, yep, that's all of my, um, questions, thank you.
Great, thank you, and, um, I first want to clear out, uh, your, at, request for guidance on Shawnee Pass, the charging station and the court resurfacing. So, for example, the charging station, your proposal is assign it to BPTS to further develop, and then maybe pursue, or do we have an MTC grant, can you clarify that?
Well, from what Council of Walts, we do have a grant, we just
Okay.
need to get all the documentation for that, uh, but it actually is to first give it to staff, so we can further develop, and then work with the BPTS Committee, uh, to identify locations, uh, where these charging stations can be put in.
So it would be some staff time? And then, um, you don't have any monetary amounts assigned to the different budget years
Right.
here, so after we give you direction, is the end goal you going back with staff and coming back with the final budget? Like, what's the process, and what direction more specifically do you want from us on the charging seat?
If I can get significant information that I can actually put in a worksheet, and I can have it back in time for when the count, the budget gets adopted, then, you know, council can say move ahead, but regardless, if I don't have that information, still asking for council to give us the, the direction to move ahead with this project to develop.
Okay, so it's taking action and figuring out what, what additional
Right.
financial implications, is it the same with Shawnee Pass, because there's no budget item there?
Yeah, Shawnee Pass will be the same.
Same thing, and we don't know when those items might hit the budget at this point, it's too preliminary today to start thinking about that.
Well, we, we possibly could have the, um, charging stations by the tw- the twenty-fifth. Uh, but if I don't, I mean, it's still going to be, you know, that could be something that could be brought back mid-year.
Okay, and the town court resurfacing here, um, you're looking for direction on donation versus?
Using Park and Lou funds.
Yeah, okay.
But the, the pros and cons is, we could use the Park and Lou fees for additional matching for the bathroom.
Yep.
Um, or we can use thirty thousand this year for the resurfacing, um, I've had, I've had some conversations with Patty, and, um, she's, you know, she's more interested in getting the courts resurfaced as soon as possible because of the conditions of the court, um, but she would, would also, from my understanding, she was not aware that these Park and Lou funds were available
Okay.
for Park and Rec, um, till, uh, we talked about it at the Finance Committee. Um, so she, she asked, can these funds be used for this project, and I said, yes, they can, uh, but do you want to use them, do you want to use partial, do you want to, you wait for the bathroom?
So there's a timing issue and a source issue?
Right, and she believes if it's, if we ask for donations, we can get donations rather quickly, uh, for this project, the pickleball.
Does think that, okay, all right, those are helpful on what you're looking for, um, the storm drain, I know right now it's just looking and planning for it, um, you mentioned a large number of three million, and that all makes sense, storm drains are going to become more and more useful, do you know when that, like, are, do you have any sense of whether there's a, we gotta do that, start this in a year or two, or is this just good housekeeping to assess it now? I, I'm trying to figure out when that might hit.
Well, we had a, we had a culvert failure last year.
Yeah, I remember.
And that sparked conversation of, and the interim town engineer was, you know, yeah, we do visual inspections, but that's the external, we haven't done any type of internal review of our storm drains and culverts that, so that kind of sparked that conversation, and we probably should start it as soon as possible.
There's starting, it makes sense, and there, i- if I put words in your mouth, it's, we can't possibly tell when any large expenditures resulting from that analysis would hit us.
Right, so part of the assessment will be to develop a maintenance plan, and you're, you know, to, to get it to a certain level, here's how much you need to spend over the next few years.
Yep, and, um, on the sheriff's substation, is the proposal that they would move out of the building they're currently using entirely, it's either or, it's not both?
Right, it's, they will be moving into the front.
Okay. All right, those, those are my questions, um, I'd like to move to public comment, and again, there's no one with their hand raised in the schoolhouse, so the first person online is Dale Fow, go ahead, Dale.
Um, thank you, I have a comment about the, uh, proposed sheriff's substation in the conference room, I may have missed it, but if it, it actually is a, like a drywall or a hard wall, uh, there, that significantly decreases the size of that conference room, and as I'm sure you're all aware, that conference room serves as the emergency operations center in, in case there is an emergency, and having, uh, set through drills in that conference room, it is basically about the minimum size for a fully-staffed EOC. Um, and I'm sure you're also, or we're, we're rewriting the EOP and EOC right now, and if the town chooses to have just forever a minimally-staffed EOC, then a smaller room would work, but if you really are anticipating a, uh, an EOC that's fully-staffed, the current conference room is about the smallest that we could have for that, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dale, uh, Rita Combs, next.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment, I, I really appreciate the comments from the council, and I hope that we, as a town, can put together a five- or ten-year plan for capital projects and infrastructure needs, and not just, this is what we need right now. But there are many items that were mentioned in the capital plan, that if we don't spend the money by a particular date, we're going to lose that money. Um, and I guess they need to be moved forward once they, a priority, depending on what else is, is out there. And I know I sound like a broken record about finances, uh, if we were to then just ask residents for donations to speed along our back year-end financials and, and audits, would that help, um, move it forward a little faster? Uh, knowing the town's actual financial status would be good business practice before asking residents for more money, for more new projects, uh, my fourteen-year-old, if she can't do her finances, she won't be getting new things for new projects, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, next is David Cardinal.
Hi, I just wanted to make a comment about the sheriff's substation, wherever it's located, which is, we should be careful what we ask for or want, because we only have one sheriff's deputy assigned to our town at a given time, so, really, unless they're doing essential paperwork or office work, I think we probably would rather not have them sitting at the desk, and instead be patrolling and writing tickets and doing sheriff stuff. In lieu of, in addition to that, somebody mentioned office hours, which that, hey, there's one sheriff in town, and he's sitting in his office, so I know he's nowhere else, so I think, you know, there's some confusion, we, we don't really want the person to be hanging out in this office, talking to people when there are only police force. So I just wanted to make sure that was out there, thank you.
Thank you, Dave, uh, Karen Askey.
Hi, everybody, um, a couple of questions, uh, first of all, Tony mentioned that he wasn't sure that the Parks and Lou fee was getting assessed, and if it's not, can we please address that and get it assessed for our future development projects? Um, secondly, uh, with respect to long-term planning and Tony's comment, I do think that if the council members can focus on creating a new master plan for the town, the town center, you know, looking long-term, I think it's been quite a number of years, I think that would be a great thing. Um, and certainly with the sheriff's substation, if that becomes empty, it would be great to be able to utilize that to our advantage somehow. And then last, um, in terms of the Parks and Rec team being busy, I want you all to mark your calendars for Saturday, November eighth, for our next trivia night, thanks.
So noted, Karen, thank you, uh, Christie C.
Yeah, thank you, I just wanted to mention that, um, Obeg four funds are available in two thousand two thousand twenty-six, and I want to make sure we don't pass some deadlines to apply for those funds, um, as they could be funds for roads and, uh, bike areas, and even more, so I believe if there, if, if it's open this year, July first is the deadline for Obeg. And my other comment that I always love to see on possibly a future budget, if not this year, would be the flock cameras. Many cities around us have upwards of twelve or more flock cameras, and I'd like to see us protect the safety of our residents with accurate, uh, license plate reading cameras uh, that detect not only the license plate, but features of the car itself. And they are solar-powered, which you don't need to bring electricity twenty-four-seven to it. Obviously needs sunshine, and those are my two comments, thank you.
Thank you, Christie, all right, I am not seeing any additional hands raised at this point. Just want to give it one more minute. All right, uh, we'll bring it back for discussion at the council, and at this point, I know, um, Rebecca, you had a couple of things you wanted to confirm with Tony, whether they were considered or to suggest, and maybe if you're okay with it, we start with you to do that, and then move into comments.
Yeah, I wanted to see about getting a storage battery for the town center, um, at a minimum for the library, because I just learned that the library funds that we have can be used for that, for solar panels or bet, solar batteries, uh, storage batteries, so, um, I think it would be great, since we have funding for that, have funding available, that we create a little bit more resilience for the town by, you know, with all the, um, outages, um, at least the library would stay secure, and, um, if we have extra money from PCE, that may be also uh, a project from PCE for the town sen, for Town Hall, so that would be one project that I would add. And then, I had a quick question, on the original, um, packet, it, there was something about a Dwight Crowder Bridge, what was that for, the trail bridge?
Um, that is, um, that was from Howard, his notes.
Oh.
Um, and, so I, I don't have the full, the only note I have is that Stanford will reimburse, that's all I have. So, um, I need, I need, I need some more information on that one.
Okay, um, uh, so I don't know if this falls under a capital improvement, but, um, and whether it falls into this year or not, probably not, but one big project we do have is to update the municipal code. I don't know if that sort of thing falls into, okay. And then I, in terms of longer-term planning, obviously, we have the, um, the feasibility-type study for, uh, adding or restriping Alpine Road to create three lanes, so I don't know, that's a much longer-term project, but there will be some budget item needed for probably the feasibility studies for that, um, so I don't know where that would fit within this, obviously, we don't have the money to do it per se this coming year, though we do have, hopefully, we'll have access to Stanford's hundred thousand, but that obviously won't be enough, so, you know, it's just something to put on the list for maybe a little bit further along the line.
Yeah, it's my intent that the list of projects, it's almost like a parking lot for the CIP, and every, every year, as we go through this process, council will say, we can fund it this year, we can't fund it for it. Um, this is just the starting point of where the CIP needs to go.
I want to make sure everyone gives their view on Shawnee Pass charging station and the, uh, in Lou source of funding for the court resurfacing, um, and I think those are really, uh, yes, engage staff or the appropriate committee to move forward, uh, with no funding right now, and if you have views on the in-Lou funds versus donation question.
Oh, okay.
If you want to comment.
All right.
I want everybody to try.
So the EV charging stations, um, I feel we should move forward with that, since we will supposedly have the money for it, so just hopefully you'll get the paperwork soon, or wherever it's gone off to, um, so I'm definitely in favor of that, since the money's there, and it's not going to cost us more than some staff time, um, town court resurfacing, um, I, if Parks and Rec is recommending that as a priority, um, then I have to agree with them. Um, in terms of moving, using Parks and Lou, if we're allowed to use it, um, I think maybe need to chat with Patty to see if maybe we use half of it there, and then they, see if they can raise the other half or something, um, and the same, put the, whatever's left over, whatever you can't raise, whatever, yeah, whatever's left over in the Parks and Lou, move it over to the bathroom project. And then the speed bump, I think there are enough grant sources to pay for that, I don't think that's a very expensive thing, so as long as we can find grants to pay for that, um, I'd be fine with moving ahead with that. And then if your assessment that we take about three hundred thousand out of our, um, capital fund, if you feel that that's, doesn't put the town at risk for future needs for next year, um, I guess I'm okay with it, I mean, I don't feel that the sheriff's station, substation is critical, but it seems like there's a grant that might pay for that, so.
Yeah, that's coming out of the pot, right.
I, I think we need a little bit more study as to, like, as Dave said, you know, if it's one person to do paperwork, maybe it's not so, such a useful use of that fifty thousand, particularly if that money could be used for something else, so I'm a little on the side about the, I mean, maybe we could just put him in an office if he just needs a spot for, for paperwork, um. Otherwise, I think. a lot of the other things are all paid for by grants. It's mainly, it seems, the storm drain assessment and the storm drain repairs. Is there no CCAG money for that? Because they're big on storm drain stuff. So.
We can look.
Yeah. And then the surface streets, resurfacing, you know, we need to kind of keep our streets up. We've kind of neglected them for the last year. So I think it's okay to move forward with that because of the matching fund requirement. We have to come up with a hundred and fifty thousand, but I'm fine with that, I guess.
Anything else? Okay, Mary?
Well, I, I would just want to say thank you very much for putting this out there and getting it going. The one thing I would say about the police station is that it's got to be part of a changing vibe in the town hall. We need a town hall that's in general receptive. So that people come in, they feel like they can get a cup of coffee, they can talk to people that, that when it's open, that it's open in the, in the way that we were originally comfortable with, which is that it was receptive. And you didn't have to be there just for business. You could come in and say hello. So that having the police in the front may not be the most welcoming kind of feel. So we're going to have to be really aware of what that vibe is going to be like when you come in and how, how it plays out. Because, you know, we're trying to get people on the both sides of the bridge, so to speak. I'm fine with the, obviously, the EV charging, the town court. I think the town court should be resurfaced by donation. We raised all the money to do all this. We can raise some money to resurface the courts. It seems like a reasonable thing and an easy thing, as opposed to bathrooms, that I think it's a little harder to raise money for bathrooms. So and speed bumps seem to be very popular for donating these days. Everybody wants to donate money for those speed bumps. I did have a stupid question about Westridge. Did you mention the part from Cervantes, Mapachi to Portola Road? I got, I got lost at that point. The, you listed a bunch of areas and it seems that the, the part of the road that's actually starting to slip is as you move right on to, on to Portola Road off of Westridge.
Yeah, it's Minaca Road from Cervantes Road to Golden Oak Drive. Possum Lane from Town Limits to Westridge Drive. And Westridge Drive from Solana Road to Mapachi.
So that you missed the part that, that looks like all hell, which is
These are the areas that have the lower PCI.
What's a PCI?
Pavement condition, condition index.
Usually it doesn't look like that. Okay. It's the slope coming off of, off of off of Westridge onto, it's, it's quite steep and it gets bricked and the thing is sort of just coming down. That's what I thought. Anyway. Might be worth, worth having the engineer look at it. And I was interested in the right-of-way funding for trails. Where does that funding come from?
That comes out of our capital projects.
It does?
Now, we do also have we also have gas tax money for right-of-way.
Oh, you do? Okay.
And then we also have open space for any of the open space trails.
Yeah, because most of our trails are on, on right-of-way.
Yeah.
At least. Partly. Great, thank you. And thank you for putting the time into this.
Thanks, Mary. Craig comment?
I have a long list. So first of all, the street resurfacing, I mean, obviously, we need to keep moving forward on that. And I trust that you guys are, you know, we got a new engineer, he can go kind of check and make sure that PCI is sort of matching up with, you know, actual reality on the ground, but just moving that stuff forward makes complete sense to me. So that, that seems good. Strongly in favor of the storm drain assessment. I think we should do that as soon as possible. Obviously, we're not going to then spend three million dollars the next year to fix everything, but it's one of those things, the sooner you know, the sooner you can, particularly if there's something that's about to be catastrophic. Because once those things fail, they're very expensive to fix. So if we can catch it before it's catastrophic, that would be huge. And you know, maybe there's only one of those in all the things we look at, but if we can catch that one early and then we slowly work our way through the rest, I would be strongly in favor of that. The speed bumps, I have pretty mixed feelings about that. And I, I think having go to BPTS sounds like the right thing. My experience is the people who want them really want them and the people who don't hate them. And so making sure that there's a robust process for evaluating and not just the people who are saying, oh, I want it, I want it. And the other people are going, well, wait a minute, you know, we're not being heard. So I, I think we just need to make sure if, if we're going to move forward with something like that, that we have a robust conversation around speed bumps, because I think they can be controversial. Ford Field Bathroom, I would definitely want to see us try to find matching grants to, I mean, this is matching to do the initial work. Like, I, I think that if Little League and, you know, people that are interested in it, they could help us with that initial evaluation. So I'd like to see us do that. And then the court resurfacing, yeah, I think we should do it. I'm definitely okay with using Inlu. I, I don't know what else. We haven't used that money in a while. So I mean, other than we could use it in the bathrooms, but I, I think I'd rather see the sports guys pony up money for that and basically just get the courts done. Get a lot of use on these courts. That seems like a reasonable use to me for that. The bridges, those are good. If the insurance company covers them, I got no problem. We talked a little about the having the trail committee look at the trails. I'm generally okay with twenty thousand dollars. I mean, that's not going to break our budget. But I would hope that we're very mindful of, we've squeezed staff, we've squeezed every other part of our budget. So just continuing to spend like we've spent in the past years. I just want to make sure that we're being mindful. And I think they will be. I think it's just let's, let's really make sure that the trails we choose to fix truly need to be fixed. And like I've seen Eagle Trail, I just walked on, you know, last Sunday and, you know, it's fallen into the creek. So it's, it's one of those things that soon it won't be there if we don't do something. And that may be moving it rather than repairing it, but, but it certainly needs some analysis. So engineered, so the efficiency, I think that's great. I think as everybody knows, lighting is a huge, you know, you get your money back in lighting in like two years or less. And I think we've got lighting that maybe not, is not optimal. So that was certainly a place I'd look as well as boiler and some other stuff. The sheriff stub station, I have a, this gives me a lot of heart, heartburn. First, because it's going to impact our EUC, but more than that, they have radios on, right? I mean, they listen to the radios all the time. They have to. And the idea that somebody would try to use that conference room while they're in there, just, it seems impossible to me. And I do a lot of public service stuff, so I'm very supportive of getting them a, you know, reasonable place. But I don't think the conference room is the right place. So if we could find another office, you know, in the building, maybe. Or maybe we find a way to make the building that they're in a little less of a warrant as, as another way, but I'm definitely not supportive of taking the conference room. I just, I can't imagine how it works. Because unless you put, you know, drywall all the way up to the ceiling, and like you say, it's a sloped ceiling and it's got that nice wood on it, it just it, it, it doesn't seem well conceived to me. And I may be missing the details here, but that would be my sense. The other question I didn't mean to ask you when we were in questions was, can we spend that cops grant, that fifty grand? Can we put it toward the sheriff's contract?
We already do.
Okay, so it, it seems like that's where I would be putting that fifty grand, given we have an extra million dollars to deal with. All the IT stuff, I trust it will do the right stuff. The EV charging stations, I think, again, going to BPTS makes sense to me. And if we can get a grant for it, that, that all sounds reasonable. So let me just look through my list here. I think I catch that. Is this the time to talk about ongoing projects?
Ongoing projects?
That's one of the things he asked was more projects. Sorry, ongoing was wrong, additional project beyond what he listed here.
Sure, other people have raised that and
Yeah, I mean, now's the time where we can do it, you know, we can do this run and we can come back to whichever, whichever you prefer. So so in terms of additional projects, I think we should be thinking about is, and Rebecca sort of touched on it, but I'd like to generalize it, which is kind of wildfire resilient projects. And I realize some of them are operational, but some of them are going to be capital. Particularly if we start thinking about evacuation routes and stuff. So I think we do need to put some kind of placeholder in there to start thinking about, you know, how are we going to make the town safer? And, and I'm sure there's going to be capital costs associated with that. So I, I would, I would ask you to consider that. I think the town center master plan, we have a great town center. But at some point, the way you keep it great is much like we're doing these other evaluations. I think we're going to need to think about that and then potentially budget for whatever improvements that we need. Flock cameras, I'm okay putting that in there. I think it's still an open discussion. But, you know, we have the automated license plate readers now. At some point, presumably, we're going to have a discussion about how much we're paying for what we currently have. And then how much the flock cameras would be and we can, you know, we can do that budget analysis at that point. But, you know, obviously, there's interest with the residents and there has been ongoing with the automated license plate readers to keep the town safe. And, and I appreciate that. So I think we just need to look at that and understand is, are there additional capital costs involved with that kind of project? And then the final thing is just resilience in general for the town. And I'm thinking more along the lines of like microgrid. And again, Rebecca, I think was getting into a little bit with the library and batteries. But, you know, how do we keep the town center up? I mean, it's both our EUC, it's our library, it's sort of the center of the town for people to meet. And it makes a lot of sense to me that if we lose power, having our town center be the place that people know that they can go and the library's up and running and they can charge their laptops and they can get on their phone and get the internet. So so I would just want to make sure that as we're thinking of additional projects, that we think about that sort of broader notion of making sure that the town center in general is resilient. And then my last point, and you know, I think I've mentioned this before, but one concern I have is it's easy to have all these projects and say, oh, yeah, well, we're getting paid for grants and all this stuff, but they all take staff time. And the piece I worry is there's some of these projects are people's pet projects. And, and I get it, that's, that's great, but if we're spending staff time without getting reimbursed for it, I start to worry that at some point, you know, I don't mind doing a little bit of it, but at some point it gets to be too much. Like, it means staff's not doing something else we pay them to do. So I don't know how we get a handle on that, but you know, as we talk about these, it would help me to understand a little bit with these capital projects, like roughly how much staff time's involved in dealing with them. You know, and I don't need, you know, I'm not looking for you to go, oh, I know it's, you know, three point seven hours. That's crazy. But, you know, this is a five-hour project, a twenty-hour project, a two-month project, you know, I mean, they're, they're quite different. And eventually we'd look across all these projects and say, well, if you add them all up, you know, like, that's another staff member. Can we afford that? And, and I think that's the other piece that I, in looking at this capital budget, I don't know how to think about that. So, so I would ask to the degree you can, and I realize it's not simple, but the degree we can try to help us get a sense for what sort of the staff requirements are. So I think that's it. But overall, thank you. I mean, the presentation was clear. I appreciate, I appreciate the goal that you have here is we need to have sort of a CIP plan so that we can think about this. And we're not just thinking about what we're going to do in the next six months, but really, you know, what's our five-year horizon look like? So thank you for that.
Helen?
So echoing, you know, thank you for this. You know, I absolutely, storm drain is really critical, right? And so I definitely support that. The road resurfacing, I am concerned about Alpine Road because it's starting to have cracks on it. But I do, I will echo what others have said that we need to start thinking about the evacuation route situation there. Speed bumps. You know, again, as Councilor Vice Mayor Taylor said, speed bumps are controversial. You also have to make sure that fire engines can get in and out. And I also, you know, since for the data for twenty-one through twenty-three for accidents, it's not on Sausal Drive. We've got, you know, we've had twenty-nine accidents and sixty percent of them have been bicycle ones and that, you know, Portola Road at Westridge, what, you know, around where the new crosswalk is by Alpine Hills, like, we've had twenty-nine accidents in those two years. And again, they're not like, obviously, I want to I am concerned about our kids getting to school and safer routes to school. But I would like us, you know, BPTS to look at the data about where to focus. If we are going to spend money. And so that, if that is my sense, instead of say, you know, and speed bumps, anytime you do anything with roads, it's, it's expensive. Let's see, Ford. Let me make sure I have road, but storm drain evacuation plan. Okay. In terms of Parks and Field projects, I absolutely support using the Park and Lufy's, you know. Like, that's exactly what a Park and Lufy is for, is a fee to support new infrastructure for when people move in, right? And that's been decided by the courts and what it's allowed to do. And so creating new parks opportunities for the community totally makes sense. So in terms of the bathroom design, I would like to see that one because that facility is not used as broadly across town. So I would like that one to be more of a donation based to match what we're, our Proposition sixty-eight shortfall. I mean, that's me personally. Like, I do feel like the Inlu fee should, you know, serve the broader community. While we're talking about broader community, you know, we do have, we, you know, I do feel like we still need a dog park in town. The school had to close off during the week. And so you know, if we're talking about new, new projects, dog parks are, you know, you know, dogs off-leash is always controversial. And sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. And, you know, when you talk to the folks at the dog park or the play group, dog play group, they're totally split. Some of them want the dog park and some of them don't. So but I do feel like it's another facility that we could offer. In terms of the trails, I'm fine with that. So I'm fine with that. In terms of the sheriff's substation, I have concerns as well with the location. So I'm not thrilled with it. I'm, I don't have a solution. I just, I don't know how often the room is used that's next to the more bigger facility, if that would work even. Or to make it more welcoming where they currently are. But I don't love, I, I mean, I like the idea of the cross pollinization with our, you know, with the staff and to make it a better working relationship with the sheriff. But I'm not sure that that proposal works, unfortunately. EV, and I have this, so very similar concerns to Councilmember Taylor, so I'm not going to echo. You know, say it again, to be redundant. The EV chargers, I looked it up quickly. But the town gets three hundred and seventeen thousand total. And then that, and then PCE for however many ports, and I don't know how many ports the town put in for. I also know off the top of my head, twenty-three percent of the cars sold in twenty twenty-four were EV in the county and statewide. It actually matches twenty-three percent. So I definitely feel like we need to provide, you know, while we have the money available. Obviously, with what's happening at the federal level, some of this money is going to go away. So I personally am all for getting this money while we can. And echoing the batteries for town hall, I don't think we have the money right now for the batteries. I don't know what, but I my sense is that money for batteries is my sense is that money for batteries is in the pipeline. Um, you know, like I've been poking around, looking for Half Moon Bay and here, um, for batteries. And, you know, I got a call two weeks ago, I think I mentioned it, um, that they were going to microgrid. It's a 10 year project is what it's looking like. Um, Portola Valley didn't qualify for the money, but I think it wouldn't be important for the long term for our resiliency to try to figure out how to, you know, if we can find money someday, I think it's a great idea. I don't think we have the money for it right now. So, um, I think does that give staff direction you needed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I say something real quick relevant to that? Um, the library fund actually has 1.375 million in it.
Okay, um, I'd like to make my comments. Um, okay, so I do have a bigger picture comment for you, Tony. Um, we're kind of, it's a tough year. And I want to make sure we're all grounded in what we're doing this year, which is we're getting our house in order. We're trying to understand where we are and understand what we need to do to reflect the council priorities. So I think if, if this sounds like a lot, um, I would encourage you to come back and tell us to pressure test how to prioritize within what, what the feedback you're getting is because all these ideas are great. Um, like a, a master plan for the long term, a, uh, longer term resilience plan. I, I, there's no way I wouldn't support all of that. However, to get to the place we need to get to by June 30th. I do want you, if, if it's not feasible to get to something that is, you know, a, a decent proposal from a financial perspective to come back and maybe the answer is we revisit it after we do the safety element, for example. So I encourage you to have a dialogue with us around those types of points and really keep laser focused on, we need a budget by June 30th and it has to have a certain look and feel in order to support us through, uh, the rest of this year and on into other potential revenue enhancement, uh, measures. So that's the bigger picture comment. Um, line items and, and specifics. Um, I don't think the sheriff, moving the sheriff substation has been thought through enough from my, uh, perspective. I don't really understand what we're choosing between and it doesn't add up to a workable solution from my perspective. So I think that needs more, more thought and, uh, discussion before we're approving money for it myself. Um, I'm fine with looking at the Shawnee Pass, uh, speed bumps, but if it's a heavy lift, I, I think there are some reasons to think it's going to take some work to get through. Um, I'd, I'd be okay getting B P T S started on it. Um, moving on to the charging stations, uh, if the grants are there, uh, and B P T S, uh, does its job and, and, and comments that they support it, that's great. With staff, um, but I do encourage you, charging stations popping up in a lot of places might implicate other committees in town, uh, depending on where they are. So I would encourage people to think whether it's only B P T S or them plus other applicable committees, but that's, that's a relatively minor comment. Road resurfacing, we should do. Court resurfacing, I understand the comments being made about the in lieu fund being an appropriate and community wide benefit. Um, I would talk to Parks and Rec, the committee and see if they think it's, um, you know, how quickly could they get the donations, but I, I would be open to a dialogue with Parks and Rec about if they felt strongly it should come out of one or the other, I'd, I'd be open to hearing that. I do respect the comments people are making about differential use and benefiting the greater number of people in town. Those are important factors for me. The storm drains, you know, it's an important project for us. It's part of resilience for us. And, you know, as we now have a new town engineer, it, it actually may be a good moment to get a fresh pair of eyes on it and, and look at what that might be, um, might look like over a couple of years. So really important to me to do that. The trails committee, I, I was on the trails committee for a long time and I think the budget was $20,000, uh, in 2010. So, uh, I don't think we're, yes, it's the same amount of money, but it gets you far less. Historically, those guys have done a really good job being supplemental pairs of hands, cutting down the trees that are blocking, um, slough, the stuff that starts eroding the trail. At one point they got a, a, a small vehicle and, uh, pushed the soil. I actually trust them, that they've been managing this stuff for a long time and the members are long termers. So I, I actually think that as long as they're working with the town engineer and thinking through best and highest use within that budget, I actually appreciate them not asking for more, uh, this year, given our constraints. Uh, then we go, quick question, what's an O B A G grant and are we eligible for it? A B A G? I thought I, that's why I was confused.
It's one Bay Area government.
One Bay Area, is it for, what would it be for? And do we apply for them?
Like. It could be for various technical assistance, transportation. It's all the Bay Area counties.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a regional governance.
Okay, maybe I just need to get more educated on that. It sounds like the deadline is imminent. So if we're not already applying, um, that's a future issue. Um, I T, great, I'm, I've always been in support of, that's like my highest and best, uh, use of effort, um, because the public has to understand what we're doing and, and hear us. And flock cameras, like i- in the future, I, I think they make a ton of sense for us. Uh, but in the spirit of being grounded, I, I don't know that this is the moment for that. So let me know if I forgot anything, but that, those are my comments.
Can I follow up?
Yeah, please, now anybody else who wants to.
Um, so, and just to be clear, I completely agree. On, on these additional projects, I'm hoping they sort of get into your capital improvements parking lot. Not that you're going to jump on them and come back with, you know, estimates in the next 30 days. So just to be clear, I, I, I think they're important things, but in the context of a five year plan, not in the context of next year's budget. Yeah, so just, so I, I'm aligned. I just wanted to make sure you didn't think I was asking for something more and, and I agree with you. I, I think that's true for the whole list that I had there. So, you know, just, we'll work our way through it over time.
Yeah. And anybody else have follow on comments? Rebecca, I think you might have one.
Um, in general, I'm kind of on the same page. I'm adding stuff to your parking lot, except for the battery for the library. I think as you evaluate the P C E grant for the, um, maybe the boiler or whatever. That one should also be stuck in there to see if that makes sense as well, because you're going to be doing the same. It's part of the same package of, of potential projects. So I would like to see that one evaluated if possible.
Um, last comment, I want to keep moving through the agenda, but Mary.
Well, uh, and the bridge, um, the drug, the Dwight Crowder, that, that's ridiculous. It's, it's, needs to be done. It's like, should be done. It's broken. A tree fell on it. It's, it works, but it, if somebody, if Stanford's willing to pay for it.
Again, that was the notes that Howard left.
Yeah, it, 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 it's just a broken board and it looks really crummy. And if Stanford's ready to pay for it, it's easy.
Okay, thank you, Howard.
So I did want to just to, a couple of comments. Um, the library money, 1.5, I'm hearing that these batteries are three to 15 million. That, so I'm just letting you know, right? Um, so I don't know if that's accurate, um, and, but, but that's what I'm hearing. So I wanted to also talk, there's been a lot of discussion on grants tonight. Grants are often very hard to get and take a lot of staff time and then they, and the easier ones are Peninsula Clean Energy just is like been very incre- you know, it's a nonprofit. They keep helping people to, um, decarbonize. Um, but other grants are not as easy. So I just wanted to note that. Um, so.
Good point. Thanks, thank you. All right, um, I'd like to move on to the next item on the regular agenda, which is the presentation regarding engagement with two public outreach and education firms for possible uh, revenue ballot measure in 2026, November of 2026. Um, Corey, are you presenting or Mark, are you?
I'm presenting.
Okay, thank you.
With Corey's assistance. Basically, we've had some conversation and I know that the finance committee is still working through the pros and cons of a bunch of options to, uh, bring us fiscal sustainability. But we've had conversations about, well, should we try a ballot measure? So what this proposal is to begin moving from thinking about something to focusing on how we might actually do something. Um, so there are two proposals that I'm working on and what I'm seeking from the council, I'm going to go through the highlights of each, but I'm thinking from the council is this is something I can sign off on. But I want the, the council to say, yeah, okay, go ahead and see if you can put it together or not. Uh, the one thing I do want to make absolutely clear is that I'll work with Catherine on the contracts. And that I can make absolutely clear that the contracts will be posted on the web. The first, um, I've worked with both of these firms, which is why I'm bringing them forward. First with Lou Edwards, which is based out of Oakland. So Catherine Lou provides the overall leadership, uh, working with the project team. We haven't figured out the project team yet, which I'm not even going to ask us to figure out until we actually have a contract. But it is, it's almost like a community organizing effort that she leads. We don't have the capacity to do that effectively with the current staff. Um, and actually even when we had a lot of staff at other places I've worked, we didn't have the capacity or the experience or the skill set or the actual accomplishments. I mean, so she helps with, um, she has developed a month by month to do lists that starts with June, July. A lot of it is figuring out where is the community on this and do we have the support to even spend more money and move forward. She works closely with the Godby Research, which we'll talk about in a bit. She works with messaging, messaging development, how to connect community vision to a fiscal sustainability process. And, um, she has worked, she, what, she will also help us shape the actual language. She's worked with the community process, signatures. She's worked with the, um, Charter City process. Community she's worked with in San Mateo County, Belmont, Burlingame, Coma, Daly City, East Palo Alto, Half Moon Bay, Nobre, Pacifico, San Bruno, San Mateo, San Francisco, Menlo Park and Redwood City. So she has particular expertise in those. Uh, this year she had, 2024, excuse me, I think something like 84 successful, uh, campaigns. Uh, some, the bulk of those related to, uh, sales tax measures, but she is familiar working with other taxes. And with the, um, uh, the real estate transfer tax. Um, the second is Godby Research and Lou Edwards is based in Oakland. Although she's working a lot of these other areas. Godby is based in Burlingame. And he's worked with, um, let me get to his. Some of the cities in our area. First of all, he has worked successfully with the, um, Portola Valley School District. In recent elections, 2024, but as far back as 2010. And my conversations with the board chair and with the superintendent, they've been very happy with working with him. This is the person who does the community research, the polling and that kind of thing. He's also worked in, um, Los Altos Hills, Hillsborough, Town of Tiburon, City of St. Liam, City of Saratoga, Los Gatos, some other places. But for our local bit is with the school district. The basic steps he puts us through and then they, he and Catherine would work together on this. We have the kickoff start. We, we do the review of what data we currently have. We draft a questionnaire. We develop a sample design. And we, um, begin to work this into a survey. And the survey is done both internet, phone. And he figures we would need 200 successful respondents out of our 3,600 registered voters to have a relatively, uh, 95% accurate, give or take, plus and minus zero to 6%. Um, and they're all done by his team, the ones that are done in person. I mean, they're, they're done by a person. This is not an A I situation. I've, I worked, most recently I worked with Brian and Catherine in, um, in Windsor, where we were looking at doing a sales tax measure. And what we discovered when we were testing it out is that we had a 52% possibility, which was not enough to go forward. So one of the advantages I have in, in working with Catherine is that she stops at that point. Doesn't try to sell us further. Pricing on this to do the maximum amounts, Godby can go from 15 to 22 minutes on the survey is $30,170. That's on the 22 minute. Catherine Lou is giving us her small town discount from 67.50 a month, $6,007.50 a month to $5,750 per month. She does not charge an hourly rate. She stays with us all the way through. Um, and does as much as we have to do. Much of that will be done, um, can be done to zoom. A lot of it's also done in person. I've, I've worked with her on both of those. The key is that you get somebody to kind of organize and run it and work with the local community to, to see, are we going to, is this worth proceeding? Working with Godby to see what the surveys tell us and then we can make a decision. And we're probably looking at a decision about moving forward before the end of the calendar year. And you can burn a lot of energy, as we've seen in some local cities, trying to do this stuff by ourselves and then being disappointed. And I've been a part of those. It's in the town of Los Gatos, I was involved with the utility users tax, which they didn't have. I was out there pitching it myself. I organized it. I was the assistant town manager. And by golly, we got 25% in favor. So it just, you know, the council was all for it, except for one who never became mayor ever. Um, but it's just, I'm, I'm busting, I have interns, everything else, but I didn't have a professional who's used to organizing themselves. So I'm interested in your comfort zone and me going ahead. But I'm assuring you, we're not going to repeat the issues of did Catherine ever look at it? This Catherine, Catherine's going to write it with me, uh, and with these firms. And once we, if, once I sign off, I get back with you, we haven't, we're not talking about organizing any committees. We're not talking about some committees at this point until we actually have contracts in place. And we have the results, we're key to this too, as the pro and con results out of the finance committee. We're going to hear those, I believe, on the 16th of June. So you'll be able to get that as part of the information too. So I'm happy to answer questions and I'm, um, well, just answer questions. I've had Corey kind of go through these, uh, the draft proposals, which is what I've received so far, that these are not contracts, these are just how we might work together. So, thank you so much. Happy to answer questions.
Thanks, Mark. Um, do you mind starting here?
I, I don't have that many questions. Um, my only question really would be, do you have a preference about which firm?
Well, I prefer both firms that I'm presenting.
Okay.
That's the ones I've worked with. And both of them, doing it by themselves is not as effective as doing it.
And, and Mark, um, underlying that is the proposal is to hire both because they do complimentary work?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's, but it's two different contracts, two different firms.
Got it. Okay, so one would be a polling, one would do polling and one would do.
One does the organizing, the leadership. One does the organizing, the leadership, the campaigning. I think you can probably check with some of your Half Moon Bay colleagues if Catherine was fairly successful working with people there. But Brian doesn't do that. He does the analysis, he tells us, and they both together will recommend to be spending more money or should we go forward?
Right.
Which is why you get a ninety-five percent success rate.
So, you know, I'm a big believer actually in, in what Catherine Lou does, you know, campaign. Polling helps. Polling is, in my experience, is generally a not, not always used, right? It's when you can afford it. And I don't honest, you know, so I absolutely support Catherine Lou, but I'm not, you know, and I wish we had enough money. Like obviously I, I, I'm hesitant on the polling.
We're, we're going to come back to discussion.
Oops, I always do this. Nope.
Okay. Craig? Hey, Mary? Want to say that again, Mary?
I said, no, I think it's great. I, I was a little unclear about how long the campaign would actually last. I mean, you're talking about having to make a decision by June. So would Catherine start the, in like in July and then work for the next year and a half? Or would it be, I, I don't quite understand how the contract works.
I can give some sense of it, starting June, July twenty-five. That's when you begin to do research about the town, the demographics, putting together the team, starting to create what the survey will look like, what the polling will look like, what messages we want to test, all of this kind of stuff. Then we will, in that summer period, we should get the results of the polling, which includes what messages work, what negative messages work, because you need both. You need who's, what messages against a revenue effort will doom it and which ones have a better chance of making it work. And if it all comes together, she stays with it through November of 2026.
At fifty-seven fifty per month?
At fifty-seven fifty per month. If we are moving ahead with, we actually got the analysis that says that our ballot measures will be successful.
So we're talking about six times fifteen, sixteen months? Six thousand?
The contract I'm proposing will, is a seven months. I'm not proposing the whole thing. Only proposing to the point where we make a decision. You have a new town manager then, where you make a decision about whether you want to proceed or not. Alls I'm telling you is that there is a schedule that would go all the way through. And yes, each month, because each month is organizing, developing messages, organizing, going out and doing the community meetings you have to do and all of that. But I'm not proposing that we do this entire proposal in simply seven months.
So when the seven months is finished, which would be hit us in February, I guess, or somewhere around there, March, would this, would there be a project team of residents that, and staff and town council members that would continue forward with promoting it?
It could, yeah, it's, it's up, it would be a new contract and a new decision. If you want to continue that. You, you may have a strong enough active resident group. If you do the, the option of doing the collecting the signatures to bring something on to the ballot, that may be a strong enough team to carry forward. So alls I'm trying to get us to is, how do we start? How do we stop just saying, gee, we might want to do a revenue ballot measure to what's real and what's not?
And you spoke about the signatures. So I was, that was my next question, was about the whole citizens initiative idea that we've talked about.
That's still an idea and I think if any community can pull that off, it's this one. You have the thirty-six hundred plus registered voters, you need ten percent. So you need, so you need six hundred signatures to get you three hundred and sixty that are valid. And I, I don't know any other community that has, that I've ever worked with that has the capacity that this one has. And you built it up over the years, so you should feel good about that. Yes, she would help with that as well and getting that organized and it may well go on without needing her further. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to do a contract. You know, on getting the, the basic information for you. It's not appropriate for me to do that. You know, having a different town manager may have different perspectives on it.
And in terms of, you said that Finance Committee is meeting the sixteenth of June with their potential recommendations for
I think it's just pros and cons. I don't think they're at the, when the Vice Mayor and I have attended those meetings, what we've asked them is give us pros and cons of each of these options. And within those options are revenue ballot measure. But we have a wide ranging things that they're looking at. They have a pretty strong subcommittee that's doing the analysis. The Vice Mayor has been very clear. Obviously speak for himself on this, but he's been clear to them. I want, don't worry so much about what you're going to recommend, get us the data. So that the council will have that information to make a decision.
And you've, you've gotten these two proposals from these two firms?
Yes.
Do the, is there a deadline by which you need to respond and make a decision to them?
No, I told them I would get council feedback and direction. I'm not asking for a council vote at this point. I do have, both of them are within my forty-five thousand dollars separate. So if, unless I get a lot of pushback from you saying, don't do it, and I get that, I won't do it. But if I get comfort, I will do it and have the contracts developed beginning tomorrow.
I had another question, but it popped out of my head, so.
So I understand that both Craig and Helen have additional questions. I'm going to ask Craig first and I have a couple as well.
Yeah, mine is short. My understanding is with Lou, that, that was month by month, but like if we don't start, like you get the contract together, but then we're waiting to get input from the Finance Committee, et cetera, that we could wait, like the months, we can decide which month she's actually working. It's not going to be seven months, starting at some number and just chunking along. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we, we have some flexibility.
We would start with the kickoff month would be.
Right. But is, I guess what I was trying to ask is, say we did two months of sort of early kickoff and then there, there was sort of a month we didn't need to do anything. And then we did two more months, like, like once we kick it off, is it seven months straight through? Or are there potentials for there to be sort of an air gap, if you will?
I think we'd have to discuss that with her in the contract to see. And it's also a discussion among the community members who are interested in this as to what kind of organizational assistance do you need? I, I believe that you could work out the, the extent of the work or maybe take a break and let the community do some work. That's possible. It's not how I've worked it, but that doesn't mean it's not doable in this community. Alls I'm trying to assure you is that I'm not, I don't want to commit council, the community, the staff to going all the way to November twenty-sixth. What I'm trying to do is get what information do we have? What community support do we have? So that the council or the community, depending which route you go, can make a decision about.
Great, Helen?
The thirty thousand dollars for Godby, you know, obviously polling is lovely to have, but is there any wiggle room in that number? You know, I think
Which number we speak of?
The thirty thousand? You had said
If we do a, let me get
Right. I mean, usually it's like, you know, X number of contacts for X number of minutes, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, it's fifteen minutes is twenty-seven thousand, two hundred. Eight, eighteen minutes is twenty-eight thousand, four hundred. Twenty minutes is twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred.
Thirty minutes of what?
The amount of minutes spent on this.
Each interview?
Each interview.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, what was the least expensive option they proposed? What was the least expensive option?
Twenty-seven thousand, two hundred.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
So it's thirty, thirty-five hundred bucks. And he doesn't, he doesn't pitch either one. What he was saying, depends how deep you want to go, all of that kind of thing. What I'm raising here is that I'm not going over that.
Okay. So my questions relate a little more to the logistics. So you, you don't have a contract right now. You would negotiate the contracts and some of these points you could raise depending on further feedback that you get. And then in terms of the Finance Committee pros and cons, that's going to be mid-June. So when do you think, like if, if there is an approval of both of these and that's enough, when would work, would Godby start first? Like, how do you order it? Do they both start together in July? Like, can you tell me how it gets off the ground?
We would do a kickoff together and figuring out who's going to do what. And the kickoff, I mean, the biggest message they gave me when I made the contact about it was, don't do it.
Yep, yeah, get, get moving. Because we don't, we are on a timeline.
It may look like August of, because that's your big day. First Tuesday in August, twenty-twenty-six is a long time away.
Yeah.
But it's not. But yes, we would start with that together. The kickoff would be together. We have to figure out who to be involved in that. Contracts, Catherine and I will work on that. We're hearing together.
Is this more when the timing for getting started?
We could make it started. I would like to
Soon.
If, if we do it, I'd like to see it started after we get the word from the pros and cons and the council has so sometime in June.
Okay.
And then, you know, really moving June, July, August, September.
And so this will hit our budget, like you'll have enough information, say you move forward on one or both. Tony's going to be factoring in the cost into the budget.
Probably looking at it being in the next year's budget.
Next year. Okay, and so she'd be budgeted for now for seven months. And Godby, is that a contract that just goes straight through? It's not month to month or a per month chart?
That's correct. The only one that's month to month is, is, is the Lou contract.
Okay.
Like I say, they, they don't bill by the hour. So they suck up a lot of time initially, particularly if we're looking at a community organizing.
And my last question is, how did you go about picking them? I know you said you've worked with them in different jurisdictions, but are these the most effective you've seen? How, you know, what's the range out there? I don't believe, to, to head off something, I don't think we have a lot of time here. But I do think the public will want to understand kind of where this came from.
There are, I'm sure there are other firms that work on this, positive there are. So these are ones I agree, that I have worked with with success and have a comfort zone with it. That they will, they'll perform, they will not try to squeeze us for more money than we need. So it's, yeah, admittedly, it's my comfort.
Yeah.
When I've talked with some of the potential town manager candidates, different firms have been used. And I'm sure if I circulated for that, then who knows how many months I would spend trying to sort out. But that's, it's because of my comfort.
Yeah, and, and to be clear, I think that's important.
No, it's a great question.
At least speaking for myself, that is important.
Yeah. And I'm happy to see that Brian did good work with the Portola Valley School District. That gives me some and that Catherine has worked with so many of the communities that are our neighbors.
Great. Right. Thank you. All right, I think we can move to public comment. And I see no hands raised in the schoolhouse. I am not seeing any hands raised online either. Give it a second. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody, so let's bring it back for discussion. Rebecca, do you want to go first?
Okay. I think it's, there's no controversy about the fact that we have a structural deficit that will hit us in a year and a half or so and that we absolutely must come up with revenue enhancement measures. And given that that's a fact, I think it's going to be very critical to have professional help for us to create the messaging and do the polling to see if we get enough community research and figure out community support and figure out how we can reach people and how we can get them supportive of the measure. My one little concern is that we just haven't seen the budget. You know? And we're not going to see it until next, in two weeks, correct? So I would really like to see the budget before I spend seven, you know, whatever it is, thirty plus forty, yeah, seventy thousand. But I understand, you know, we don't want to wait too long, but yet I feel like I really need to see the budget. I don't know. I'd like to see the recommendations from the Finance Committee about what our options are in case. I don't know. In case they come up with something super creative that's different than an actual ballot measure or parcel tax. So I'm just a little concerned about rushing in and, and my feeling is to wait another two weeks. But I, I also understand that this is something we need to move forward with. My only, my other concern is that a lot of people leave town for a lot of the summer. So polling to me, if we're going to try to reach like families with kids and people with second homes and they may not be here, I mean, maybe their cell phones, but so I don't know what, if we're starting to poll people, are we going to get a sort of skewed group that are answering us during the summer or not? So those are kind of where my concerns are about this. But in general, I'm, I'm in favor of these two, but I also feel like we maybe need to delay it a few weeks, a couple of weeks.
Uh, Mary?
Well, I, I of course think this is Mark's call. I think he's put some careful thought into it. He, he wouldn't be, and we can benefit from his experience to get, get going. We don't know what we're going to be polling for, so it'll be several weeks before, be many weeks before we get to the polling part. Probably won't be until fall maybe even, but we got to get started. Or we're going to run out of money. And, and also we have some structural issues that we need to think about. So I think, I mean, there, there are many options to solve this problem, but all of them will require a ballot measure. Oh, and we're not talking about those, what those specific options are yet. They're, they're going to help us figure out what options we're putting up.
Okay, thanks. Craig?
So I'm very supportive of it. I think it's money well spent. I would ask that you start working on the contract. Starting in August sounds about right to me rather than somehow, because you know, we're going to get some information from the Finance Committee. We're going to talk about it. We won't be here for the first meeting in July. So I, I would be comfortable if we started in August. I think that still gives us plenty of runway for August, twenty-twenty-six. I would be uncomfortable if we were pushing this off into the fall and I'm appreciative of that. Because I'm assuming that you guys will work the contract, you know, get the contract ready. And then if we start kind of in the August timeframe, there's a little bit of getting started. And then it's September and then families are back. And then I think we will have hit the ground running. So I'm pretty comfortable with a timeline like that. So if that, if that fits with what you have in mind, then this, this all seems reasonable. I think also to Rebecca's point is with that as the timeline, we're going to get Tony's budget. We'll see that if for some reason there's some big red flag and we're like, oh my God, we couldn't spend seventy thousand, which I can't really imagine what that is, but if it were true, we could still, you know, pull the sort of emergency brake if we had to. So I'm, I'm very comfortable and, and like I said, I think this is money well spent. I think having professionals help us with this is absolutely critical.
Helen?
So I absolutely support Catherine Lou. I, you know, I fully support bringing in professionals. I just think that the polling is a luxury. I think that I think that what we get, you know, Catherine Lou should message appropriately, you know, all of us, you know, that you are going to get some people that aren't, aren't supportive of any taxation at all. We know that, whatever the revenue generation measures are. And try, you know, polling is also an odd duck these days, because getting, you know, finding people that will talk to pollsters is tricky, right? So, you know, so I feel like even just having a hundred people poll versus two hundred would, you know, if there's, if that's less expensive, I just, you know, it's a luxury that I'm not sure we can afford, kind of what Councilmember Flynn said. So I, so that's my opinion. So I support the forty thousand, don't love the polling. If we could discount it, you know, fifteen thousand, I'd be much more comfortable, you know? Instead of twenty minutes of conversation, I think ten minutes would be plenty personally. So that's my opinion, thank you.
Before I comment, Mark, I have a question. Does starting later in the summer throw us off? Because I would imagine it's days or weeks to negotiate the contract. By that point, we might be in mid-June. So is it going to harm the process in your best guess? If we, if you don't sign that until right, like a little after mid-June? And then the second thing is, when would polling, do you know when polling would need to start or the, the outreach would need to start in order to plan for success? Because that's what I'm focused on, is maximizing the chance for success. So any ideas on those?
Well, I think we'll talk with them about starting in August.
Well, but, but do you know that that can work?
Just what the impact of that would be.
Okay.
And what, what work, is there any work that needs to be done before we do that? I mean, I hear enough concern about the timing in this conversation here, that it's worth talking that over with them. And bringing that back to you and saying, "This is the feedback I received. This is what we might miss out on." But the points that people are nervous about, that's why I'm asking the council.
Yeah.
And they, they're very relevant to me. So when we start working on it, we'll be asking those, we'll be asking the questions about polling in the summer. We'll be asking the questions about, "What if we don't have polling? How does that?" What I just found with the polling was that it just gave us, gave me a snapshot in time, and then a decision about investing further energy, time, and political capital.
Yeah.
Or not.
Yeah, that, that's understandable.
That's basically what I got on it, but I'm, I'm hearing, I'm trying to pay attention and try to get back.
Yeah, no, we appreciate you being very thoughtful, because you don't have to bring this forward. To be clear, you're consulting with us, even though this is under your signing authority, because you, you want the feedback, so-
I want the feedback.
I, I appreciate that very much.
That's what-
My perspective, we're in an existential crisis. We gotta get this right. The stakes are too high. We have to err on the side of a little too much than too little. Because think about getting it wrong, and I'm not sure where that leaves us. So I'm trying to set us up for success. I personally would be fine just moving straight ahead on both and getting them aligned and signed up, because I want the, the resources. I do take the point that it's hard to gauge right now the actual value of each, but I don't have time, and I don't believe we have time to really optimize this as much as everyone here personally would like and normally, I think, apply. But I would be very comfortable if you went to them and, and said, "Think about the big timeline. Can we edge off the timing so that we can get some of this information?" Personally, if they said, "You're putting my process, you know, you're, you're creating a potential time crisis here," I would just get moving as quickly as possible with both of them. I don't see a scenario in two weeks' time. It's always better to have budgeted information before you make a decision. So I, we're just in a tough place on that. I'm very comfortable moving forward with it, because based on what we've known, Tony's given us a year of hard work, piecing out where we are, where the moving levers are. And I think we're not gonna be terribly surprised in two or three weeks. Anything's possible, but I'm not expecting that. So based on where I am, I'm fully in support of moving forward on both of those. So we can continue for discussion, but that's where I am.
I have one more. Um, I would just note, I looked at PBSD's calendar, August twentieth is the first day of school. And, uh, it's true, people really do travel quite a bit during, until that, you know, that, those days, that first day of school, so.
Well, those are all good questions to talk over. I can give you regular items of interest Friday updates with you on how that is. It's not gonna be, it's gonna take a while to put a contract together, to gather the information you're interested in.
Can I, can I give a clarifying comment as well?
Yeah.
I'm, I wanna clarify that I am totally in supportive of hiring them. I just also kind of with, what Vice Mayor Craig has said, that it's a question, it's sort of timing it and when to start. So I'm totally in favor of hiring them, but it's just a question of figuring out the timing, the best timing.
And I just need to learn what that does, and so I can tell you.
Thanks, Craig.
I appreciate the comments very much. This is exactly what I was hoping, your actual reflections on it, so thank you.
So my follow-up on the Judith piece is, yeah, if, if it's gonna in any way derail us, go for it. But August felt like about the right time. And then I had a question for Helen. So I get we're in a tight budget. Thirty grand seems small to me if we decide to go forward and we spend all the money in the election and we lose. Like, I'd rather know, you know, to Mark's fifty-two percent, I'd rather know that, hey, it's fifty-two percent, and let's, we're gonna have to find something else. You know, maybe it's this lease, leaseback and get, buy ourselves some more time. So for me, thirty grand, I know we're a tight budget, but boy, I, I just, I would hate to get to an election and find out, well, we just missed. So I'm just curious of your thoughts on, I, I appreciate being a budget hawk, so to speak. That's great, but this money feels like if we don't do it and we get it wrong, it's actually quite a bit more money. Does that resonate?
And I absolutely appreciate that. It's just, it's showing you my prugal nature, right? So-
So recognized.
And I, you know, I definitely, it, it feels very luxurious to have polling. You know, I've worked on many campaigns and never had polling, right? But they were running no matter what. You know, if we do the leaseback instead, it, you know, that we don't have the support kind of situation, then we need to know that. Maybe, maybe it is disincorporation. So I think it's important, yes, it feels very luxurious to me, because I've just never had polling, but it, it'll be, it's, at the times I've had polling and the few big campaigns I've been associated with, it's amazing. It's, and it definitely adds a huge layer, so.
Corey, did you have something to add? Just quickly, some detail through the mayor, if that would be appropriate. As our Finance Director and I were a bit obsessive at our last election, looking over what some of the other cities were doing, is there was two different charter city requests coming through on the ballot, and both were unsuccessful. And one of them did not use a polling agent, they only used Catherine Lou, and the other did not use either. So, and we looked sort of at a wider scope of California, sort of in the history, and when they tend to use one firm versus both, the success rate does decrease. So typically, when paired together, again, given that they do drop out before they see the success rate, either from it or not, it is typically a higher success rate when paired in both.
Thank you, helpful. All right, so the request is to provide direction to the town manager on, on this. Mark, do you have what you need?
I do, thank you so much. And I can tell you, I did consult with Tony before I brought anything forward.
Okay, super. Thank you very much. This, this is gonna be an important piece of our next steps, so thank you. All right, we don't have, we're gonna go to Council Subcommittee Liaison Committee and Regional Agency Reports. Rebecca, you submitted yours. I don't know if you have anything to add to it, but who has any reports to make verbally? Or Rebecca first, if you have anything to enhance on yours?
Um, I think I'll just pass to the next council meeting, just for the sake of time, so we can get out of here.
Yeah, okay, Mary?
Well, I have the, the pleasure of doing two inter-agency outreaches. One was, I went to the Woodside Town Council yesterday, which was very interesting. So we got to see the new manager there, who seems very, really very good. George, Justin Ledbetter, what a good name. Anyway, he, he seems terrific, and it was very efficient, and I hate to say it, but the meeting lasted thirty minutes.
Okay, Mary.
They're fully staffed, and it was, it was just a very interesting experience for me, you can imagine. But the, when, the MRSD meeting today, which was the special meeting on the Hawthorns Historic Complex, was extremely interesting. It, I could talk about it a long time, but basically, they gave seven, there was no, it was a working group, a working meeting. There was no action. And I did speak, and they were very grateful for that, because their seventh option is, and they're probably the only one that works of their seven, is to do an ad hoc committee with us to figure out the fate of the Hawthorns. And they haven't voted on it, and they haven't brought it forward, but they, it was, it was really, of all the other things, about the only possibility. And it was certainly the only thing that would allow for the flexibility to move forward with the irons that have been in the fire so far.
So Mary, just a quick clarification, this is on the historic complex?
Just the historic complex.
Just the historic complex, and they're going to come to us to form an ad hoc committee?
May. They may.
Okay.
Yeah, it hasn't been voted on. This was the working, working group.
Okay.
And I thought they were glad that somebody, that we showed up.
Good, thank you for doing that.
So I just wanted to give a quick summary of the Finance Committee meeting. It was, it was a good meeting. There are a couple of issues I promised to bring forward. One, as you know, the pros and cons are gonna come, so I think that's gonna be helpful. The other thing they were gonna look at was what they thought the consequence of an absolutely balanced budget versus being within, say, a couple of hundred thousand. And then one member definitely felt strongly that we should catch up on our audits before we go out and ask for revenue. So I think that's something, as we work through this, we're gonna have to, and, and Tony, you know, was, heard the, heard the comments. I, I think he's struggling with, how do you schedule the auditors? Like, it's something he doesn't necessarily have control, so, excuse me, it's something we may wanna look at. Maybe it's something we have to put more money at, I don't know, but I, it, it resonated with me as well. And then the last piece, again, one of the members was, there's a reserve policy that will come forward at the next meeting, and there was some question whether, whether it should be higher than it was. So just, that, that, that's where they're coming. I think we'll get some of their feedback, but I just wanted to bring that for the whole council, thank you.
Yeah, that, that's very helpful information, we'll look for more. Helen?
So, thank you. I followed up with Roberta, what's her last, how do you say her name? Thank you, about Safe Roots to School. Because Rebecca, it said that Safe Roots to School did not have any funding for Portola Valley, but she, she, they have an Earth Capades Biking and Walking Safety Assembly. Ormondale was supposed to have that to take place in the spring of twenty-five. I didn't get the date for Corder Madera. And they also, from Safe Roots to School, received traffic, traffic safety kit materials in March of twenty-five. So they did get some funding, so, so that was an odd report. So I just wanted that to be noted. I also wanted to let you all know that PG&E got back to me. The helicopter and the patrol did not identify the object that tripped the wires that activated the EPSS, but, but they did identify a software setting issue that may account for the multiple outages in Portola Valley recently. We are addressing this issue internally, and it should not happen again. She's new. So, but I wanted to report that, and I will get that up as well. And that's what I've got, thank you.
All right, I think we, unless there's other reports, public comment on the reports Justin made. I am not seeing anybody in the schoolhouse, and I see no hands raised online. So we'll close the public comment and look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.